John, do we need a motion to open a public hearing?
We do not need a motion to open the public hearing. We've already had the motion and the vote to schedule it. Just so the record reflects, I do have the posting and mailing affidavits from Lisa Zaloga. They are all in order, and board has jurisdiction.
Great, thanks, John.
Who's going to start, John or Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make my comments very brief tonight, but thank you for the hearing and the opportunity to speak to everybody. We look forward to feedback.
Mr. Betts, if you could just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to do that. John Betts, owner of Shippies Restaurant. Thank you.
John, so we look forward to hearing the feedback from the public as this is a public hearing. We were asked to bring feedback from the surveys that we've conducted, and I have those here, copied for each member of the board. Just to comment, you know, we've been using guest and employee feedback since before I bought the restaurant. It just seems to be a great way to guide us in terms of the approach that we'd like to take for the business. So if I could just, you can look at these at your leisure, but I'd just like to pass them out. Is that okay?
Yes, you can. Thank you very much.
Take a copy and pass it along. Just wanted to walk you through real quickly what you got there, and then I'll get on to my final two comments. So the first page you see there is Shippies 2.0 needs your support. It's the exact survey that we provided everybody, just so you see what the questions are and that kind of thing. Again, you can read that at your leisure. The second page, just from some marketing standpoint, I'm sorry, the second page, the second handout. Well, yeah, let me, let me, I see, John. So when, when, when people go online and they take the survey, it shows the work that we've been doing, where we are in the planning process. It shows some pictures of the renderings that are there, including the, and we update this as the project is going along. We have the rear rendering and the side rear rendering. And so those are the things that, that people basically ask questions on. And this page here is simply a summary of the results. Put the survey down there if you want to use that QR code to do your own surfing on that, you have at it. And we put all the comments here, and basically it's three areas. It's about the remodel, it's about their Shippies experience, menu, food, ambiance, that whole kind of thing. So it's everything that we've gotten back from them, 275 responses, and of course, that's, that's where we're at currently. So we appreciate being able to provide that to you. Regarding our project as a whole, we are on schedule with the first phase that we talked about when we first met last February, and we're targeting May to be complete with that. And I'm going to turn things over to Lisa to just walk you through the status on things.
John, do you have a copy of that to enter into the, the public record?
Which copy?
Of what you handed to the board?
This one.
Here's it.
If, okay, as long as you've got an extra, great.
Thank you.
Which way do I want?
Facing you.
This way or this?
Yes.
It used to change, I don't know. So August, please up here, we can talk about them. Lisa Zaloga, you're architect for Shippies. So since this is a public hearing, I thought that we would start with a history of where we've been and how we've gotten to where we are, because some people may not know. So John Betts, who grew up in Southampton, he bought Shippies in 2022, and he had a vision of renovating and, and enlarging it. So because we knew that the expansion would be a long time coming, I mean, go through the health department and, and all those kinds of things, we broke it into phases. And Phase One was the renovation of Shippies, which we completed and opened up. And then Phase Two was what's currently under construction right now, that we got approval from you guys last year for, which is really an expansion of the restaurant portion of it, not, you know, an expansion of dining and patrons. So that did not require any kind of health department approvals. It was really just an expansion of the kitchen, the bathrooms, the elevators, and like I said, that's currently under construction. Now, back in April of this year, we got trustees' approval to expand our current easement that we already have for our septic. Like, I want to say all, I can't, I can't swear that it's all, like, most of the businesses in Village, in the VB district, you know, the septic systems are on Village property, and there's easements for all of these, all of these septic systems. Some, some businesses even share septic systems on the Village property. You know, these things have been here for a long time. So we had an easement, and I'm working to get the map that Lisa asked me for that shows what our current easement is, what the current right-of-way that is behind Shippies, what that shows, and what the new expanded easement is going to be. And I'm trying to get all of that shown on one, on one map. Unfortunately, I don't have it yet. But so we're, you know, we're, we've got trustees' approval, or a resolution for that, back in April of 2024. And with that, we went to the Suffolk County Department of Health, and we got our first notice of incomplete in April of 2024 from the Health Department. There were, I think, 30 things on it. We've whittled that down to just quite a, a very small portion now. And we mentioned that at the last meeting, we're primarily looking, they're looking for SECR, they're looking for the signed easement, which we tried to get signed today, but we should have that by the next meeting. So we, you know, we're, we're working on those things. I, I think we're really, really close, and very few things left on that list. So back in November, we thought that, okay, we're getting there. We're, you know, everybody seems to be working. So we, I made applications to the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, and the Architectural Review Board. It was decided that the Planning Board should be seen first, and so that's why we came to you guys. And we have been trying to, basically, the reason we wanted to get to the public hearing and to get to the Architectural Review Board and the Zoning Board is to make sure that we're able to satisfy all of the boards and all of the agencies. And, you know, like I said, we've, we're up to our seventh notice from the Health Department, and every time they ask for something, the plans are changing, you know, the surveys are changing, the, the limits of the easement are changing. It's kind of like shooting at a moving target. So I had a phone meeting with Lisa and Alex, and with their help, we're trying to coordinate and make sure that all of the boards and all of the agencies have the most up-to-date plans and information, because some things seem to be falling through as, as we make changes. We make the changes for one, and, and we haven't updated the others. So I think that we're pretty close to that, and being that we had our meeting last week, I, I knew you wouldn't have time to review. So, but I do have, I, I think I have everything that I'm going to be submitting this week. We got our last, our seventh notice of incomplete on Friday from the Health Department. So I think that, I think with all of those revisions and all of our comments, I think that we're there. So that would be the history kind of before. So then, the project that we're actually here for is an expansion of a special exception use, and it's being termed, it's the beer garden. It's being termed outdoor dining, and we're going to have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as the Architectural Review Board, which we are currently scheduled for at the end of March. And we are proposing this outdoor beer garden, which we've put out a lot of interior renderings of what, what it would look like. It has a roller cover that will open up to probably 90% of the roof, as well as sliding windows that will open up on, on Windmill Lane. And, and the goal is to have an additional 62 seats out there and, and be able to use it. And, you know, it does require variance. As outdoor dining, it requires more variances than we were originally thinking that it needed, but we're going to the, we're going to go to the ZPA, and we'll, we'll, again, we want all of your feedback, and we want to make it all work with all of the agencies. We've, we've had conversations with the mayor, and he's done some studies on parking and ways that we can create parking. We've done a few drawings as well, you know, the mayor's drawings kind of got 10 spots. We think we could maybe even get 18 or 22 spots. So we'll have to see how that goes, but, but we're working on that. We've had conversations with the mayor, as well as Steve Phillips, as to how to make that work. We are giving up the apartments, the, the two grandfathered apartments on the second floor, and turning those into storage. And that will, you know, be until and if and when the Village gets a sewer district, and then we will be back in front of you again to potentially bring those back. The, the garage building, as you can see on, on the two renderings for the rear of the property, because I know everyone, you know, the, the front of Shippies looks great, you know, the rear and that parking area, back there from the municipal parking, is always kind of with rotations and, and all the backs of the buildings, nobody pays as much attention to them. But we have a plan to stucco Shippies, you know, shut, stucco the garage, which is really an integral part of the kitchen usage. Stucco that, increase the, the, the rear wall of that by about five feet to hide our dumpsters. We are giving rotations a spot to have a dumpster for them as well, because they don't have any, they don't have any space for that. And so part of our process is to convert what we were asked to at one point, to have a, a truck loading zone back there, to convert that truck loading zone, which, under the code, isn't required for a building that's under 5,000 square feet, and make that to onsite parking spaces. Other than that, we will have to be asking for a parking waiver, which we've done the calculations for, and that's part of our zoning board application. And when we, when we ask for that parking waiver, Alex and I kind of did a little research today, and there apparently was, back in 1986, a, a zoning board application for the previous owner to try to build a, at one point it was a two-story building for retail, then it was a one-story building. So there was actually a variance issued to allow for four parking spots already. Obviously, we need a few more than that, and it actually went to planning at one point as well. I don't, I don't think planning was ever finalized, and obviously, it was never followed through with, but, so we're, we're trying to move forward with that as well. I have the plans, I have the septic, I have Ed Armist here to answer any questions, but being that it was a public hearing, I thought we would, I'd go through it all, and I wasn't really trying to get into the nitty-gritty details of what we will, what, what I will resubmit once we, once we're there. Any questions, or you want to hear from the public?
I don't have any questions.
No?
This is, this public hearing is not for items like the menu.
Right.
Plumbing is not up to us. I know it's an immense problem, and I assume you will solve it elegantly, and there's a lot of people concerned about it. We all know that it's a nice building, been there for a long time, for 67 years for me. It's right at the edge of the swamp, and it's an old swamp. You can't change where it was built a long time ago, and if you can solve the plumbing, and that's a moving, moving goalpost, everybody knows it. It's, it's just not a, we're referees, really.
It'll be nice, I mean, you know, obviously, the septic system that's there is non-conforming and in groundwater. Our proposal, and I could let Ed speak to it, but, you know, our proposal will keep the three feet above groundwater, and, and it'll be a better system.
I've seen all the drawings, I've seen a lot of AI, it's, it's a moving target. I've only been on this board, I was volunteered to go briefly on it. It's always, it's, it's, everything that comes to plumbing for, everything this board sees has been a moving target. It's, the technology is proving, the county board is evolving, we know that. You just have to do the best, but I really hope you solve it. It's, imagine the, the parking, that's a good idea, I mean, it's, it's wonderful, but, and if you, the changes you're making for things like dumpsters and it's, everything is an improvement for the other side. So you're, you're facing the Reborn Artist Library, which is now the Artist Center. I mean, these, these things evolve. I, I even know some people that used to live in the apartments.
So do I, my husband.
Oh, did you? Oh, I, so Jim Royster was there for years.
My husband lived in it when he was a kid.
Jim, Jim now greets me at Costco and asks how the apartment is. But it's a, it's a moving target, and I, I hope it proceeds, you know, I, I'll talk see, in a year or two, a year or two, I'll talk to the great Mr. Betts about the menu, but that's my problem.
Take it, take the, take this, the survey.
Amanda, do you have any questions?
This is a little bit different than what we discussed at the last meeting. So you're, the second floor is not under discussion at this point in time.
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned the, the, you mean the event space?
Yes.
Yes, no, that's still part of the, and I apologize for, I forgot about it. I was looking at the, the beer garden. Yeah, no, no, that's still part of our, that's still part of our proposal, the, the 22 seats upstairs for the event space. The only thing that's different from, from what was at the last meeting was the fact that I, I still had the apartments on the plan.
Right.
And those are being converted to storage. That's the only difference. The event space is still part of the application, the beer garden is still part of the application.
Okay.
Apologize.
Bill, do you have any, Bill Dye, any questions?
No, I just want to make, so as far as the, I have friends.
You're volume, volume.
It's mute.
I read some stuff about the number of seats.
Still mute.
Mute.
We still can't hear you.
Not mute.
Can he see us?
He's not on mute, it may be his microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Can someone type into the chat bar?
Can Control Chow or tell him?
Can't read lips.
No, 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 no. Can we tell? Was that at our end or is it AV issue? All right, Bill, we'll circle back to you, because it might be at this end. We'll circle back. Amanda, do you have anything?
Actually, I can hear Bill, so if Bill wants to speak, I can.
Yeah, we can't hear you either. It must be at our end, so we'll fix that and come back.
Can you hear me?
With questions. Look, I think it's great news, it's all coming together. That, that's really exciting, it's a beautiful plan. It really is. You know, we're trying to help you move this along as quickly as we can. You know, last meeting, we declared Planning Board Lead Agency for SECR. Hopefully, that solves, helps with the Health Department.
Have those letters gone out?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, yeah. The one question I did have was, you, you're defining the outdoor dining, the space under the retractable roof as outdoor dining.
Mm-hmm.
Can you help me understand outdoor dining? Because as I see it, it's walls and a roof retractable. Is that outdoor dining for Health Department context, or is that a code, Village Code context, or why, why are you being so specific?
Well, it's, it's, it started, it started at the Health Department, and Ed could speak to that one, but it started at the Health Department, and their, their definition of the fact that it has the retractable roof is what makes it outdoor dining. And then when we got here, we weren't, I, I wasn't using the proper words, I suppose, and so we've modified our application to make it so that it's all, everybody is looking at the same plan. So hence the reason that outdoor dining becomes part of my, and that's the reason I need more variances, because outdoor dining has a different set of criteria for the Village.
Right.
So it was really a matter of, of the different definitions for the different agencies and how they viewed things, and so we're trying to make it all the same.
We do have to add that this is still being reviewed by the, the Building Department, because the Village does have a definition and certain parameters for outdoor dining. So we had previously been under the assumption that this was indoor dining, so we have to review and see if it's, if it's consistent with that. And I know we've had some conversations with folks at the Health Department, Lisa can address too, about making sure that we're being consistent with the Health Department standards.
Yeah, so that's something that we've got to clarify.
So it's, it's more like the, the part of outdoor dining says you can only have 50 seats outside. We have 55, so that's part of my variance. What was the other one?
Outdoor signing.
Is it gravel or cement, or some kind of impervious?
Well, I mean, our, our goal was to have it as an impervious surface with drains in it.
Yep.
Which is better for ADF.
Right.
So that was, but I don't know that that makes a diff, I don't think that's written anywhere for anything as to whether it's outdoor dining or not. I could be wrong, but I.
I think, I, I spoke to the Department of Health Services, and they say that this, the, the space as depicted with walls, there are four walls, including, and they said the windows that, that work, according windows, they, they're a wall. That defines interior space, so the space that is different from what they were shown on the plans, but that the space, if it has walls and a roof that can cover it, it, it would be considered indoor dining from the Health Department's scanning. So I think that that maybe is the, the places that the space needs to be designed to be outdoor space, if it's going to be outdoor space.
Wait, so I'm not saying that, we just need to understand it, and it just needs to be consistent, so we're trying to speed this along by, you know, getting all the, you know, it's like whack-a-mole, we're trying to.
I mean, we were, I was at two of the meetings, and, and, you know, we showed them the roller cover stuff.
Yeah, so that's, we're just trying to clear all the question marks up so we can push this thing along.
The Health Department doesn't have defined definitions there, whether it's.
Sorry, can you, for the record, can you?
Ed Armist.
Yeah, okay.
So there's generic categories for dining, it's either fixed seat, movable seats, you know, takeout, things like that. So there's no definition that the space and everything, that's basically defined by the agency reviewing. So there's things like variances, building permits, things like that, that agency determines what it is, not the Health Department. They just look at the septic, and it designs the septic. You say it's indoor, it's indoor, if it's outdoor, it meets the criteria of outdoor. That's based upon jurisdiction it's in and the local restrictions.
That, that's not the, well, that was not what the conversation with Uchiya, that, who's Director of the Commercial Review in the Health Department, he indicated that they have a defined understanding of what indoor dining is, and that it really comes down to it being enclosed by walls.
Well, that's, they be an understanding, but it's nothing you were going to find written down in the code or in the contract.
Which is why I called, because I didn't, I couldn't find it written in the code.
Yeah, but the whole thing is, this space, as I understand it, is not permanent space, and it's not occupied space. There's going to be movable walls, movable roof, so it's not a permanent space. It may be structured there, but basically, it's not a conditioned indoor space.
Movable walls?
The, the wall faces Windmill Lane.
Oh, 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 right.
But the other, the other ones should stay.
I knew about that one.
The accordion windows, which, which many, many restaurants have, and when they're closed, it's indoor space, and they can open it and make it more open to the outdoors, but that doesn't create, that doesn't change inside to outside, it's just, it's, it's a feature, you can open the window or you can close the window. It does not, you know, putting an awning over a patio is, is very different from building, putting, building two walls, having accordion windows. The space will be conditioned and used year-round, that's indoor space. The reason it matters at the Health Department is because it affects the sanitary calculation, and, and whether or not we can actually get a, a design here that you can meet the sanitary code requirements for is, is really, is, is essential.
It's still going to be defined by you, whether you determine it to be basically permanent, occupied, or permanent space, or a seasonally. The Health Department doesn't, they're not going to determine it, because basically, they sit back, they review the septic design and make sure it meets code. Any other requirements for easements, environmental permits, building permits and variances, they sit back and wait till that's approved by the local agency. And then once that's approved, they get a copy, and then they, they issue a permit for construction. They don't make determination in the local agency.
Okay, but the, but I'm just like looking at it as just from a factual standpoint, it's like, like, I don't see how this, how, I don't see the interpretation of this as outdoor space. And maybe Planning Board members find differently, but I see walls, I see a ceiling that can be open like a sunroof, and I see space that's going to be used for four-season dining, which has no substantive difference from interior restaurant space. I, I really am, it, on the original site plan I looked at, I didn't think that was the case. I thought there was a retractable awning that covered a gravel area, which seemed to me to be, that could probably be, be used for three seasons, but it seemed like outdoor space. But when I saw the additional progress drawings, the other items that were submitted, it became clear that, no, there are walls, there are windows, it's interior space. So that's, hence like, like, I was confused, and when the, the plans that were submitted to the Health Department matched the first site plan that I saw, where it says retractable awning and has a gravel and indicates gravel as a flooring surface, which makes sense, that sounds like outdoor dining space. So that's.
It says retractable roof.
Not awning.
But even still.
It says for retractable enclosure.
But a sunroom or, you know, three-season enclosed space is still, doesn't mean it's permanent and occupied year-round. It's not, you know, heating, electric, things like that, insulation values to meet the energy code, it's not going to have that in this space.
I was assuming that the Zoning Board of Appeals would be, I mean, deciding, I mean, that would be the agency that would be determining that this was, that was an outdoor dining.
That you're seeking a code interpretation of whether it's indoor or outdoor dining?
Well, I assumed that was going to happen, being the fact that I'm asking for outdoor dining, and that they would be the ones looking at it.
Because I think up until now, it was being, it's my interpretation, that we were treating this for zoning purposes as, as indoor dining, because it's contained in, in a, in a structure.
Well, it, it's up against three walls, I, I can't change.
So just to jump in, so we're still waiting on a building inspector's determination, though, correct?
Yes.
So I don't think it's worthwhile to kind of debate what it is here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we will figure it out.
Before we close the hearing on this, we need to figure this out and get everybody on board, because we just want to move this ahead.
And we need a dispositive building inspector's determination.
Yeah, exactly. So it sounds like there are a couple of things we need, but, you know, maybe you guys can communicate before our next meeting, and so we can come in here with like a united front.
Again, I, I was trying, like, this was, I, as far as I was concerned, this was a public hearing, and it was for the public, so I wasn't trying to get into the nitty-gritty, but yes, we can certainly before the next meeting. I will have all the drawings updated as well.
Whether it's the next meeting or whatever, we want to expedite this thing, but before we can close the public hearing and move this way, we got to figure this out.
Yeah, no, I wasn't expecting you to close.
So let's, let's, yeah. Bill or Amanda, maybe we can hear you now? Do you have any questions? Can we hear you?
Yes.
Can we hear you?
Hi, door.
Okay. All right. Amanda, anything?
No questions at this time.
Okay, all right. Thank you. The only other question I had was, so in this rendering, the garage doors are actually now being closed off. The last rendering I saw had two garage doors still there facing north. Are we, you stuck going that over?
We, we don't need, I mean, the garage doors from the inside, they're not, we're not using them. So we can close that off or not? That would be up for the ARD.
Okay, that looks great. You know, that, that addresses a, something like-
Makes the bank happy.
Well, I think, you know, way back when we said, look, let's see if we can fix that whole garage design. And I think you addressed that, so thank you.
Great.
This, this looks good. If there are no other board questions, I'm going to go see if there are any public comments on this. Any, yes, sir.
So for both, sir, and for all, any public comments, we just, before you give your comments, just identify your name and address for the record.
My name is Tim Usik. I live in Hampton Bays.
Sorry, can you stand at the, sorry, so they-
My name is Tim Usik. I live in Hampton Bays. I also work at Philly Gims Restaurant in Southampton. Became a friend of John's working, you know, going to his restaurant. I want to make just a very simple few comments because I owned the restaurant in Rivet for 15 years. I watched what John did when he came into this town and I thought what he did is beautiful. Taking a building that was starting to go in disrepair and brought it back to life. His business is incredible. He's trying to expand it, which I think is great for this town. So I want to just make a few comments. As far as the outdoor dining, maybe take a look at what Claudio's did because they did retractable roof and retractable walls. And it's still considered outdoor dining, outside dining. Greenport, yes. So just maybe take a look at that. Just a thought. But as far as his project, as far as expanding, please push it forward as fast as you can because the man is doing a wonderful job. If you look two doors away from his restaurant, yeah, thank you. You made the right comment.
Water doesn't go uphill easily.
Yes, thank you very much. So, yes, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things you have to do to appease everybody. I understand that. I went in front of the Planning Board many times with my restaurant. I built a second restaurant in Rivet. And I understand the hurdles, but you got a man that's doing a wonderful job. And he's one of the few restaurants in this town that's appealing to the average Southampton customer. Please push it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, yes, sir.
My name's Andrew Newman. I live at 101 Hunting Street here in Southampton. I don't know if I can be as eloquent as Tim was, but I, I will say that I think John's done a fantastic job there. And it's something that I think this community really needs. And if you've been there at all over this winter, which has been a very, very slow winter everywhere, you'll see that it's always got people there, whatever day of the week is. So it's obviously something that the community really supports and he definitely used the extra room. And if you, I'm, I'm in the commercial real estate business, so I know a little bit about costs. And if you see how much money John's put into this, it's, it's out of love. It's not out of a economic return. So I was really glad to hear that you wanted to push this forward and looking forward to seeing the finished product. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on this? Any other, is there any on the zoomed in or? Nope, okay. Appreciate the public comment on this. I don't want to speak for the board, but I can speak personally. I think it's a beautiful design and I, you know, I personally agree with everything that was said. We are trying to push this ahead as quickly as we possibly can. But, you know, there are certain hurdles that, you know, we have to hit. And hopefully we can get kind of a lot of that stuff ironed out behind the scenes so that when we actually bring this up for a vote, it moves forward quickly. So we're looking forward to defining whatever we have to define and the Health Department coming back as quickly as we possibly can so we can get this done. Because it, you know, it really has transformed that little corner of the village. So thank you. Okay, so we're going to-
Do we vote to adjourn or suspend or renew?
Continue.
Continue, continue?
Continue the public hearing.
That's a phrase. We'll continue.
I would say adjourn and continue.
Yeah, so I'm going to make a resolution to adjourn and continue, hold open the public hearing until we can hear some more on some of the things that were brought up. Second?
We want to do that to the, the next meeting on March 17th?
Well, what's Lisa, well, Lisa's talking to everybody else.
So Lisa, I mean, we can do it on the 17th. The problem with the 17th is I may not be able to participate on the 17th. You know, if, if you can have it all done by the 17th.
When is your next meeting?
Would be-
April 7th, I think?
Yes.
April's-
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's April 7th.
Well, I guess that's a procedural question. Do I need the ZVA to make a decision before the Planning Board?
The Planning Board would probably want the Zoning Board before making a final determination.
Yeah, on this one.
We'd also need plans somewhat in advance for the board and council to be able to review.
Right, so she could review them because she'll need some time.
Flying back from KT's speech.
Yeah, so-
So you're not here on the 7th?
No, 17th.
Oh, you're not here on the 17th either.
It's St. Patrick's Day. That's a really important day.
I agree with you. I was kind of hoping you would say that.
And I'm a Scotsman and I still will, still try not to wear orange, so this is a big day. It's a big day for the community.
So neither one of you will be here?
No, no, it's-
Oh, three of you won't be?
It's jeopardy.
Probably won't have a meeting then, right?
We're probably going to cancel the meeting. So if we can make the 7th work-
The 7th can work because that'll give us, we'll be at the Zoning Board on March 27th.
Okay.
So-
Yeah, sorry about that, but it, you know.
Yeah, okay, so if you're not, you're not going to be here anyway.
But, well, if it's problematic, we can have a meeting not on a regularly scheduled date.
We can call a special meeting. There's a procedure for that.
We can also accommodate that. So you, but we need some time to do that, right? So if you find that the 7th doesn't work, you know, tomorrow or sometime this week, let us know. And we'll try and schedule a unscheduled regular meeting, your hearing. But if the 7th works, we're going to have a pass or, I'm going to propose a resolution here to adjourn, hold us open until the 7th of April.
Right, I think, I mean, we'll be, we'll be at the ZVA the 27th, so I think that makes sense.
So that's a resolution.
As amplified, it's seconded?
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yeah.
Amanda, Amanda's an aye. Bill?
Bill's an aye.
Bill's an aye, okay.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you so much. And I'll try to get you as soon as I can between now and then.
So, so we're good to move on. So next on the agenda is RFA CF, which-
April 7th.
Is scheduled for the 7th, but I want to make sure no one's here on that one.
Doesn't appear so.
Anyone here for Conamara? No, because that's scheduled for the 17th. Although if we're going to cancel-
You've got to tell them.
Should I, should we, how do we cancel the meeting on the 17th? Because three of us aren't going to be here.
We could just put up a notice on the website. I would say contact directly council for the applicants. And we can schedule.
I'm 50/50.
Are we going to the next regularly scheduled meeting? Are we going to have to call? Okay, and let's put, put it over the next scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, I just, the board could make a motion to that effect.
But I would say to the earlier, as early as possible, put something on the website.
Yeah, we would do it probably tomorrow morning.
Excellent.
Are they through the Zoning Board this one? Is this one through the Zoning Board or they're anticipating?
Which one are you asking?
Conamara.
No, they have applied to the Zoning Board. The Zoning Board had, did have to cancel a meeting unexpectedly. They'll be heard, I believe, at the next Zoning Board meeting.
Okay, because we're waiting for the Zoning Board.
Really, April 7th is probably the best time to meet for everything.
Yeah, so a motion to adjourn Conamara to the April 7th meeting. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Amanda, April 7?
April 7.
Bill, April 7, Bill? Your shoulder will be better. Okay.
Bruchhampton Realty, no, I don't think anyone else is here. A motion to adjourn Bruchhampton Realty to April 7th, second? Right now that's adjourned to the 17th, so we don't have-
We've got to talk to them. Which one is that?
This one.
I don't recognize the name, Bruchhampton Realty.
Yeah.
It's a new application.
No, we heard that. That's the one up-
On Willow Street?
North, you know, that subdivision.
Siulu, Siulu is the applicant's representative.
And the architect come in and- So motion to adjourn that to the 7th, April 7th, second? All in favor?
Favor.
Aye.
7th.
22 Windmill Lane, we've got a motion to adjourn that to April 7th, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Kelly, Apple Highway.
Is the 7th, okay?
Yeah, White Street. Okay.
So let's go to 54 North Main, which I'm accused on, so I'm going to step out. And Ellen.
Okay.
There you go.
Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening, Board Members. I'm Liz Dale with the local Greber Tribe, 2217 Montank Highway, Bruchhampton. But my understanding is pursuant to New York State Open Meetings law, you don't have a quorum present. So the people of video conferencing, under the new video conferencing law, do not count as a quorum. So this actually cannot be heard tonight and it'll have to be adjourned, which is unfortunate. And I was really hoping for the next meeting in March, which I'm just understanding is now being canceled.
Yeah, there's a, a lack of physical quorum on St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, okay. So then I guess it will, John will automatically carry to the April meeting? Is that what's happening?
Yes, we can automatically carry to the April meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
This was the-
Should we invite the chair?
Yeah, you'll do that for me. Thank you, sir.
Behind, I'm voting yes on that right now, as long as they put some, because it is in the code, that there has to be some greenery. I think we mentioned that the last time she came here.
We probably shouldn't talk about it. We don't have a quorum or that.
Oh, okay.
It's a gray area. As far as I'm concerned, it's a gray area. Lisa's a pretty smart lawyer. And if she says that's it, well, it's sort of tie favor to the base owner. I'm with her for now.
I mean, I think the last time on, so I believe that she took heart, took it to heart.
It was, it was- My understanding may be wrong, but it's, it's, it's a move, as they say in the trade, it's a moving goalpost. I'm not quite sure what, how it works out.
So we'll adjourn that and discuss that at the next-
So that's adjourned?
The next regular meeting.
Okay. Everybody read the minutes from February 3rd? Excuse me, let me rephrase that. Any comments on the minutes from February 3rd?
I didn't see them, but I haven't seen a copy from her yet. Haven't a copy from her yet. No?
No, I didn't have a copy, but-
Push that one down the line.
No, I want to clean up, I think.
Sorry, Bill, you broke up. Could you repeat that?
There were a few typos in the minutes that I saw.
Okay. Yeah. All right, so we'll push that to the, we'll approve that on the April 7th meeting. Any other business?
Well, at the bottom of the agenda is the schedule of the next meeting. So if the board is going to cancel the next meeting, I'd ask you to just make that motion so effectuate that change. And if there's any other dates that we need to alter, you can let us know.
When we set the calendar, or the schedule, didn't, you didn't go out past the 7th?
I think the schedule was set only as far as the dates that are on the agenda up until June. That's my recollection.
All right, so motion to cancel the next meeting, March 17th.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all the people that are going to be here.
Yep, hands up.
Okay, if that's it, then we are motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
I'll move it, second.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Lisa, nice for you.